Okay, it is 12:45 PM on December 14th. We'll go back into session, budget hearings. I think we had tried to see if we could get a couple of our other department head and elected officials, but they're not here. Would we want to go ahead and do like emergency managements?
We might as well go over it. I don't think there's a whole lot there that, nothing really controversial. I don't think Nick is pretty much okay, but you know, he'll, if he wants to come back tomorrow, we can go over it again.
Yeah, he can, but I'm, here we got, at one, we've, we're kind of busy, so if we can knock, if we can knock Nick out. What page is he on?
Eighty-five. Now, of course, he did talk about how his grant money, I think that SEMA FEMA grant is getting cut in half, so I don't know much you can do about it.
So then, is the city gonna help pay up the part that's not covered anymore then?
Should we look at their agreement and see if there's any way we can help for more?
Probably need to notify them and let them know too. They may have a little bigger expense this year.
They're already into their budget here, so I'm not sure how long.
And we probably need to go back and address our agreement with them since it's rather old.
Somewhere to find that, yeah.
And, and maybe come up with a new 21st century agreement that...
It wouldn't hurt if it's, with the change in our funding mechanism.
Older than me.
What do you want to change though? I mean, is there something you want to change in it?
On EMA.
I don't know. Because I, if I remember correctly, it was pretty simple that the city and county split whatever wasn't paid for by the other grants. That's why I thought it was 50/50.
Well, we can leave it as is.
It says the City of Jeff and the County of Cole shall each pay 50% of the cost of the operation of the EMA above any amount received from federal state grants.
That, well, let's just leave it, that's good.
What's the date on that?
July 17th of 89.
Eighty-nine? So you're getting married? Gosh, that's old.
I was gonna say this.
That was this many days old.
It's a good gentleman's agreement, you know?
That was pretty smart at three months.
We like these gentlemen's agreements.
Went downhill from there. Go ahead and say it, John.
Two governments and there's no gentleman involved.
Pitch that one up.
Let's see, who was here then?
That might have been Louise Carter.
Our, Robert Gratz and Sharon James. Those three that were here when I started.
You remember that?
Oh, yeah. I remember those two.
Okay, well.
Okay. Well, anyway, yeah, but that's, you know, the revenues reflect a decrease, just because no control over that, at least the grant part. Yeah, and then salaries. Of course, that includes that extra person that he, he's asking for if the city will do it, but of course, the city has to agree to that as well, so. He's asked, he asked for it again. I mean, it's, whatever.
I'd almost take it out.
I'd almost take it, kind of like what we're doing with certified public appraisers and just say, if, if this would, you know, terminate, we can put it back in.
Okay. So you prefer we just take it out this time?
I don't see a need for us, that's just gonna drive up costs for something we don't need, in my mind.
All right.
No, we can always, if, if, if Nick gets a grant and if the city agrees to pay, you know, their portion, and then we'll pay our portion, then, then we're good. But until we, until he gets the grant, until the city, it's...
You know, as a rule, I didn't put anything other than 4% COLA. This one, I decided to leave in because it was approved last, it was in last year's budget too, so I just kind of left that.
Yes.
Left it as it is, but we, yeah, we'll, we'll take it out if you don't want it in there.
I know, I didn't want it in there last year either.
Okay.
Well, it can always be, it can always be put back in if and when it happens.
And really, everything else is all about the same. There's no, no increase, not asking for anything more than any other, any other items. So, and those are grants, those kind of get added. If he finds grants, they'll get added as a court order during the year, so.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. Good.
So we've still got nine minutes. I don't guess we want to look at, at the...
I mean, you can, we can look at, we can start. Do you want to discuss the assessor's budget at all?
Yeah, we can, let's, let's take a look at, let's take a look at the assessor.
Kind of go over it for now.
Who did call, he will not be able to make it in, he's battling a migraine, and it sounds like maybe tomorrow, like if he, he left the voice mail, I just know he's listening to us.
Let's do him now, and if he, if he can make it tomorrow, we can always come back and...
All right. That's page 97 and 98. Of course, the assessor has this, it's a separate fund, and we get, you know, close to a million dollars in property tax. Then, we've had this, the discussion about the state reimbursement is currently being held up.
We're gonna have it before the end of the year. He said so.
Well, not sure that's gonna happen, but...
Question, if, if we would not have it, could we withhold that amount from his budget until we do get it?
I mean, his budget has to balance.
I mean, yeah.
What do you take out of his budget?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you take out. I mean, he, there's, there's, there's one, there's gonna be a carry forward of 1.5 million, so 120,000 is, you know...
Can we just reduce that basically?
Could we reduce, could, what, could we reduce that amount by 100?
It'll, it'll get reduced.
It's in the assessment fund. It, it has to stay, the, the money, the revenues that come in for the assessment fund legally have to stay there and have to be spent on the assessor's office or related.
He assured us...
You can't really take the money out of there.
He assured us when he was here that we would have that money by the end of the year.
I still think you should use it to budget for next year. Right now, it's not even...
Well, I should probably add, I would expect we should get the money next year.
Or the year after, or...
I mean, we're, I mean, we're not, it's, it's not totally lost right now. We can still get the money, right? As far as you know?
They haven't said yes, and they haven't said no.
Okay.
The State Tax Commission, they...
Okay, all right. You know, I could go ahead and add the revenue back.
Well, the assessor assured us we would have that money by the end of the year.
It's not looking that way, but...
He wouldn't lie to us.
Yeah, it, right now, I mean, obviously, we want to get that money, and if we never get it, then that's, that's on him, but it's still, the money can still come our way, as far as I know.
So do we have anything else that...
And salaries.
Well, salaries is the, the big thing. I mean, if, let, go through everything else, I don't think there's any, again, after, other than salaries, I don't think there's any changes or, little bit of increase, I think, in postage, again, yeah, he's asking for a little more, like, kind of like Larry, asking for a little more in postage, and printing and binding, because those costs are going Everything else, I think, is pretty much the same. But yeah, salaries, if you saw his, if you want, oh, let's turn on the TV. And this is the schedule I sent you, but if you go to his tab, he's on a separate tab, because it's a separate fund, but again, this is kind of where he's at now, this column, then the 4% COLA, and these are the additional amounts that he was asking for, quite a bit. Total of 65,000 additional requests. I mean, they, I, I will say, some of his employees are some of the lowest paid in the county. He's got people making 32, 35, you know, there's, there's hardly anyone in any of the other, I'd say somewhat comparable offices, like auditor, treasurer, recorder, there's really no one making lower than that, or as low as that. So, I mean, I, I will say, I think, I think he might be overdue for some salary adjustments to get his people at least a little closer to most other similar, you know, clerical type positions in other, other offices. I will give him that.
It amounts to, what, 10 people, and the total is 65,000?
I would generally agree with, with your statement there, however, someone who's been here for a little over two years, getting a $13,000 raise on a salary of 40, I think he'd have to be here to explain that one.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
And, and a $10,000 raise, and a $10,000 raise. Those are 20...
Yeah, well, yeah, he's asking more for his appraisers. I, you know, I was mainly referring to like the clerks, the assessment clerks.
Yeah, I, yeah, right, and that's where I would generally agree.
That's mainly what I was referring to, but yeah.
Yeah, and I would think the starting wage for that, could we, definitely, Sheila can look into that one, because that is one of the problems. I wonder if we're looking at moving maintenance to 18, if it blows.
You know, last year, as I recall, we, we sort of broke out, well, here it is, the, the salary reserve a year ago was 168.
Right.
We said, you know, if you can find certified appraisers, go for, matter of fact, we, I think we said, whatever you, whatever it takes to hire them, come back to us, and we're more than likely will work in that direction.
And similar to last year, I put, I put in my, the recommended budget, another salary reserve for those same three positions, two residential appraisers and a commercial appraiser. He, he is estimating that it would take at least 50,000 to hire residential appraisers and 62.5 to hire. Now, this would be the certified, he's saying if he can find a, is that right, is that what you call them, certi, if you got your licensed or certified, yeah, licensed appraisers, that's what he's estimating that it would take to hire a licensed certified appraisers.
And I think the number we kind of gave him was between 60 and 65,000, which is right.
That's what he's saying for the commercial.
That's right in there, so...
He thinks a residential he could get for less, like 50,000.
And again, we didn't put it in the budget, we said, you find that person and we will fund the salary.
And that's what that, 184.9, I, I put those amounts plus benefits, estimate some benefits, that's what the...
Yes.
184.952 for those three positions, if he can, if he can ever fill in, yeah.
He does have positions posted on the county website, I was trying to see what he's got posted at. I just posted one last week after Jack did resign.
That's right, he's got one open, he's got an open position now.
And I think he's got four positions posted, I think.
The open and then the three new ones.
Okay. Salaries the big...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we should treat it all the same, as, I mean, you know, if you're gonna put a pool for everybody else, and...
That's what I'm saying to do with it right now.
Mm-hmm.
Or just however you want to look at it, if we're putting it in a pool, or however that would be.
Or a reserve, yeah, or, yeah, however you want. I don't do that.
See, I'm like, I'd rather the lower, the lower salaried ones to me, or...
Well, especially if we put, if, like someone said, maintenance, if we, if we raise it up to 18, we don't say I'd do that for most everybody, right? I think.
Let's just put them in a, put in a pool and we'll move around.
I, I would suggest we, we sort of have, I don't know, maybe this gets too complicated, but a pool that is sort of broken between the, those that we need to get to, comparable other employees in the county that you've talked about, and then the other pool, or the other portion of the pool is, is for the appraisers and assessors and those kind of things. You know, unfortunately, he has one, only one certified appraiser in that office, and I believe he, Mr. Butler is certified as a residential, but he occupies the commercial slot. He occupies a commercial slot, there is no residential, there is no certified residential appraiser there. Therefore, anybody who comes to work there and doesn't carry the certification could never get the certification there, because you have to work under the supervision of a certified appraiser. I don't know if Mr. Butler's supervising someone, he, as he does commercial, can he supervise, he's licensed as residential, I don't know how that would work. And then besides, do we know if they, they have the base of a bachelor's degree maybe in order to even sit for the exam and get the experience?
I'm pretty sure you do.
Uh-huh, I am too, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you have to have a degree.
Yeah.
Because that's part of it, you can't just go out and get it, you gotta go to school, and then you gotta go do the two years training, and then take the test, and all that, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I see what you're saying on that. Is he gonna be able to do his job as a commercial appraiser supervisor, and then train somebody under residential even to, you know, get them qualified?
Well, I guess, if, if you put money in a pool, say appropriated it, then you're saying some money, put in a pool, and he can do with what he wants, like give it to his lower paid employees, hopefully, and then an additional amount, maybe more in a reserve that...
You've made us, you've made a, a case for several lower paid employees, the clerks maybe, and someone else, who are underpaid compared to the rest of the county.
Yeah.
I think that's one argument. Another one is these other folks...
Right.
...who have some 25% increases here that may not...
He's gonna have to come request it.
Sure.
So, we can, we can hold his feet to the fire if...
I just think when it's all said and done, the money we've been putting in the pool, it may be close to that and it may not, I think I'm gonna be leaning towards, let's look at a percentage and do something maybe across the board as a merit that can be put into each department, because I, just, if we're doing it this way, just because the elected official or supervisors or directors have asked for raises, I mean, next year, if I was the elected official, I'd just come in and say, I want all my people to get $10,000 raise, you know, and, you know, go that route. I, I just want to try to find something that's gonna be uniform, doesn't have to be exactly the same for everybody, but just to, I don't know, the, the pool is just kind of where I'm putting stuff to kick it off until later on for more discussion. And I don't even know what, what percentage that pool's gonna be of, of the salaries, or if we look at that and take that percentage overall and split it up. There's some of them that I think need to go through HR, and the positions need to be looked at to see if it justified, you know, even the maintenance worker positions. I was looking at them online, Googling some salaries, and they're kind of all over the place too, so that's just kind of where I'm gonna go whenever we get done with all that pool money.
I mean, even the total in GR alone, the request versus a 4%, it would add up to another about 5.5%.
An additional 5.
Yes. On top of the 4 right now. And that's very few people, not everybody.
Right.
But if you look at this request though, these are pretty significant in comparison to the other ones.
That's mostly from work.
Yeah, this was a...
He's asking for triple, the 4, you know, the 4% is 21,000, and the additional adjustments, he's asking for 65, so that's, you know, that's 16%.
On top of the 4, yes.
So, yeah, no, I, I agree, he's asking for a significant amount of money, but like I said, on the flip side, he does have some of the overpaid, lowest paid clerical type employees in the county, so.
Yeah, when you start adjusting those, you've got to keep going so you don't get compression.
Yeah, they make those in hoes, too.
Okay, anymore?
He was precious enough to come up.
Oh, well.
Lock is here.
Come on in, lock it.
Yeah, yep.
Ready as we'll ever be, probably.
I think we're pretty much on, well, maybe a couple things, but, I mean, other than salaries, I think we're, we don't really disagree on anything. There is one area where your costs have increased quite a bit, criminal prosecution, that's in, that's in your quest, I put the same amount, recommended, so, but...
And I think, as we discussed, it was last year, at least one way we could try to offset costs on that would be through WRF, and I gave you guys, I think, a proposed ordinance for that. We also have, Corinne, I'll go into this a little bit, but on some other considerations for offsetting costs, one thing that we have started doing that the office had not, I believe, ever previously done, was getting reimbursement through Missouri DOC for cases that we prosecute from Algoa and JCCC. We can get it's...
We'll get $500 for a case if it goes to trial, and $300 for each case if it is...
Filed and prosecuted.
Yes.
There's some disposition we could get. So, the office previously did not do that, I'm not sure why, but we're doing it now.
So we have never done it?
Never, I don't believe we have.
I think we had done it quite a long time ago, in the early 2000s it had been done, but it's been a really long time since. We actually submitted in the last one, I think earlier this fall, we submitted, so we got about more than $100 back for a few cases.
We got $3,800 so far back this year, yeah. Actually, that's what the, but, we put $3,800 is in that revenue for next year, it should be more, right?
It'll be a lot more.
Okay. Well, we should probably change that, then, what, how much do you got figured by, or...
Well, we're gonna try and run and see how many DOC cases we have. We have the two prisons here in Jefferson City, we do prosecute quite a few cases, because the one is a maximum security prison, and Ed Quinn does all those cases, so there's a lot of cases that come out of there, some of them are just, it may be like sexual misdemeanor cases, drug cases, things like that. Some of them are like...
Assault, prison. We, what you tend to see is Algoa, there are a lot of contraband and/or controlled substance offenses there, it's a medium security prison, and people with drug offenses tend to end up there as opposed to JCCC's, a maximum security, where you have robberies, murders, things like that, crimes against, violent crimes against people, and so that tends to be the, the facility from which we get more of our serious felony crimes, attacks on guards, attacks on other inmates, occasional homicide, that kind of thing.
Being conservative, do you think 25,000 is a good dollar placehold?
I think it's 25.
Right, 20.
20, okay.
Was there any line items besides salary?
I don't think so, that should take to...
Did you hear any questions about any of the line items?
No.
Okay, all right, so, salary?
Yeah, just a little bit more discussion on that, I know, here's a... Corinne also, I know that I previously put together a PowerPoint for you guys, and I know you have those slides, Corinne, this has put together...
I saw one of them was written, I was trying to actually...
Well, I think we do this one.
Yeah.
Yes, oh, yeah, all right. Just some more, just, and Corinne went through the trouble of getting some more numbers and things like that, and just a little bit of a...
Thank you.
And I can let her actually kind of go through it, since she's the one who prepared this particular presentation.
Yeah, so I wanted to kind of get through it, and just kind of go through this if you guys want to...
Did you have an extra copy? Well, I, I kind of want one for my budget, and Debbie, one for Debbie following.
So, yeah, I just wanted to put this together, just as a means of telling you all why we're asking for salary increases, not just that we're asking for more money. I went into, did some research on what people were paying, because we used to, as far as like, we used to lose a lot of people as far as like in the legal field, we'd be at risk of losing good employees to usually the private sector, people would leave to report private defense attorneys.
And for reference, Corinne previously worked in the prosecutor's office before coming back as the office manager, so she's...
Right.
How long were you there?
So, I was here, I think I started back in 2012, 14, and then I left to work for the Attorney General's Office for a few years, and I actually worked for the United States Attorney's Office for a couple of years before coming back, and then back here, so, so I've been in a few different places, but I know that's typically where people go, because the private sector does tend to pay a lot better for people to go that over there. But now, so, last year, the state had a really big bump for their employees, I can say, bumped them about 8%, a little bit more than 8%. So I started looking at that, at what we're paying our employees, and we have some employees in our office that have been there, I think Amanda Wilson, she's been there 10 years, she was there whenever I was there. We do have some attorneys that have been there about that long, Amanda Landrumpf's been there 10 years or more. So, if you go to the, I think, third, third page, I looked up some comparison, our office versus local state government salaries, so you can find all these salaries on the Missouri Accountability Forum, I just looked up, got all these numbers from there, so it's all public information. It just varies, so we have different, we just have different positions in our office. So, we have one receptionist position, so the first group there is what our office pays, so local county, our receptionist per biweekly salary is 1566, we have 26 patriots, so she gets 40,716. Local state government, I didn't find too many of those, but that's what their salary is, the range there, 1947, they have 24 instead of 26, so their salaries range from 47,376 to 51,000, and those are at the AG's office. The next is legal assistance, so there's a lot more of those around the state than there is receptionist. Their range is 1346 times 26, so 34,999, that's on the low end, or, I'm sorry, this is for us, 1346 times 26 patriots. Or, I'm sorry, this is for us, thirteen-forty-six times twenty-six pay periods, so ranges from third, right under thirty-five thousand, and then the highest paid, highest paid legal assistant we have in our office is forty-two thousand. And then, as opposed to local state government, on the low end, it's forty-four thousand five twenty at Department of Revenue, who's notorious, like the lowest pay, they pay lower, to twenty-six thirty-two seventy-one, and that's sixty-three thousand for their legal assistants at Algoa. And then we go to the next one, which is paralegals. So, whole county, this is actually, I'm the only paralegal here in the office, and I have a dual position as paralegal and office manager. So this nineteen twenty-six ninety-two times twenty-six pay periods, right at fifty. And then, as opposed to local state government, on the low end for them, it's twenty-two forty-one times twenty-four pay periods, fifty-three thousand seventy-four at Department of Public Safety, and then it ranges to twenty-six seventy-four thirty-eight times twenty-four, to around sixty-four thousand. And then, I found one legal office manager at MoDOT, and again, like I said, my position is two different. I hold both the paralegal and legal office manager. So again, here at whole county, it's fifty thousand, as opposed to the one at MoDOT, which is seventy-one thousand seven ninety-three eighty-four. There's actually an open position over there right now. Victim advocate, again, there's, we have three of those in our office. One of them is a funded position through RAC, so she's, she doesn't really belong to us. And then we have two that work for us. So, in our office, the range is fifteen thirty-eight forty-six times twenty-six pay periods, so it's right under forty thousand to sixteen thirty-eight thirty-six times twenty-six pay periods, so, to forty-two thousand. And then, as opposed to the two positions at the AG's office, which is between sixty and sixty-five thousand, so that's quite a big difference there.
And just a note on those positions, I do realize those are predominantly funded through VOKA, because we're on that grant, so.
And then.
They fund a certain percentage of that, or a certain, I don't think it's a percentage, I think it's a set amount toward each salary that they fund, anything you go over, the county is responsible for.
Right. And then, as far as the APAs, I did not get their salaries. I asked, I asked these support staff to send me theirs, so I didn't get the APA salaries, but you can see the numbers are on the red. As opposed to what they are at local state government, it's a wide range, but it's usually between sixty-nine, or like right under seventy thousand, to the largest salary, which is around a hundred twenty-six thousand. I mean, it's just a wide range within the state, but a lot of the, like, the mean salary for them would be around eighty-five thousand. And I think right here in whole county, they start them right at fifteen, fifteen-sixty, so, right.
Currently, it's officially at fifty-four.
If you go on the next page, I might talk just a little bit more about the legal assistance salaries that we have in different agencies around the state. So, Department of Mental Health, on the low end, they start them around forty-five thousand. On the high end, they get paid around sixty-three. Department of Revenue is around forty-five. Department of Conservation is around forty-eight thousand, and the public defender is around forty-seven thousand. So, as you can see, all the state agencies in comparison to what we pay our support staff is quite a bit higher, even though we have some support staff that have been with our agency for quite a long time.
And I just actually lost my train of thought. But, yeah, I just did, so why don't you keep going, I'll see.
Sorry. I have a tendency to talk a lot, so. So, why do our employees deserve a salary increase? Why is it necessary for us? Another, our employees deserve to have, the state agencies that I was just talking about, our caseloads at the prosecutor's office are very large. So, we have our caseloads range anywhere from a hundred and fifty to around seven hundred open cases. So, some of the, like, the smaller caseloads that may be between a hundred and fifty to two hundred would be like the bigger, higher profile cases, like the murders and things like that.
More complex litigation cases. So, I mean, and I guess I do kind of remember, I was going to say, I'll segue into it, but, you know, like, when I was at the AG's office, my caseload was like twenty, maybe thirty cases. And you come here and you're doing, I mean, like, the smallest caseload we have is four or five times the size of that. And right now, the AG's has started people at seventy pay per year, just starting straight out of law school. So, when you're talking about, most of our legal assistants are working with either one or two attorneys, and we try as best we can to assign them based on what the caseloads are, but we still end up with legal assistants working well over a thousand cases, trying to keep track of the E filings, make sure that the attorneys are aware of the court date's bond hearings, that's a huge thing. Trials, getting subpoenas out for hearings, and if we don't get those subpoenas out appropriately, the case might get dismissed. Making sure that we have all the evidence, coordinating with the law enforcement agencies to make sure that we have all the evidence in the case that's necessary to prove guilty before we go to trial, things like that. So, and I guess I'll let you continue from there. And, and I do realize we keep talking about state agencies, state agencies, state agencies. When we are at county, however, I think we need to be realistic here and realize that when we're talking about employees, not just in the prosecutor's office, but I think E county government as a whole, one of our big competitors is the state, just because of where we are, being in the capital. And so that's why I think we keep bringing up what the state is paying for our salary when it comes to this, so.
Well, earlier in the year, we had a couple of openings, like Locke, Scott Fox and I, we had worked in state government, and we were trying to think of people like who might be good. But we had a victim advocate that we were like, who would be good for this position, who would be good for this position? And we were unable to bring anybody over because we did not pay them enough. So that's one of those things, like, we don't have, we can't bring people in because we can't pay them good salary, like, if we come over here, not looking to find someone that's retired, or someone who's in a position who really doesn't need money. So, it's not just the problem of being able to keep people, but being able to bring people on as well. So also, our legal assistant, we have fewer legal assistants than we do attorneys, so sometimes the legal assistants are assigned to two attorneys instead of just one. So, I was assigned for the past year to both Locke and Scott Fox, so they both have high-profile cases. Scott Fox has a lot of them, Locke has a lot, so had around a little over six hundred cases. So I always try and manage all those and then manage the office, so it's like, it's a lot of things to manage. Amanda Wilson had Amanda Landrum, who had all the drug cases, so that was several hundred, and then she had Luke Miller. What's that? Luke Miller, oh, sorry. So, yeah, it's just, our employees work for every single one of those that's there. And then, each of the attorneys manages the court docket, as well as each of the legal assistants are responsible for running that court docket, but for the attorneys who go down to the docket. Also, if we lose one of the employees, the cost of losing them is high for us, because it's hard to find someone. They have to be skilled, and they have to care enough about the case. It's not just a, a lot of people, I think, have the misconception that this kind of job, especially for, for staff position, is a data entry position, and it's not a data entry position. You have to find someone that has skills, and you have to find someone that cares enough, because it really is a matter of public safety. If you find people that don't care, or just want to warm a seat and get a paycheck, it's not going to end well.
They don't last. They burn out even quicker, when they realize this kind of work isn't for me. You know, people have to, in our office, they have to read reports of child sexual abuse. And so, please know that they sacrifice a little something in terms of salary when they choose this line of work, as opposed to going in the private sector where a lot of people could be making double, if not more, with their skill set. So it is a group of people who are very passionate about what they do. And for too long, I think, we've not really been able to figure out how to handle the issue of raises. I think it kind of changes every year. And then one year, I came before the commission and asked for essentially a pool of money, and that got turned down because I didn't articulate exactly how I wanted that money spent. And then last year, we ended up getting a small pool of money. Now, granted, it wasn't very big, but it just seems like, to me, and obviously, it's my position that, yes, we do need to increase our salaries, but I think just as important going forward, not just for prosecutor's office, but for the county as a whole, is to figure out how we address the issue of merit raises and raises for longevity for people who have been here, you know, five, ten, fifteen years, and rewarding that as well. If you look at the public defender's office, specifically, I know, you know, they start people out at sixty now, and then after one year of good work and service, you're eligible for a bump up to sixty-five. I think it was sixty-five, I know it was in the previous slides I sent to you guys. After, after that, after three years of successful service, you're eligible for another bump. And then after that, for continued quality work, you can make up to X amount. And we don't really, at least as far as I'm aware, the county doesn't really have anything like that policy-wise in place. And I think that would go a long way toward constantly addressing the money issue every, every year.
I understand why you're comparing to the state, but where do you fall with other, like, well, Boone County's probably not a good example. Let's say, I don't, Callaway, Camden, or those in, are those in there somewhere?
Yeah, there is, when you look at the average salaries that I was able to do, that I put in our last, the last PowerPoint I gave to the commission, the average starting APA salaries that are in that are pulled directly from a survey that went out, that went from, and that was for prosecutor's offices and other cross-class counties. So, I do not know exactly what offices entered that survey, but I do know that.
I mean, obviously, a place like, like Jackson County, Salons County could certainly skew that figure, but, but, yeah. I was just curious if you knew, or stood compared to, well, let's say Camden County might be the closest, most similar-sized county.
Kate Gerardo, I think. Camden, I don't believe, is because it's a third-class county, or a first.
Camden's first, yeah.
That's wrong, consider.
Several years ago, a long time ago, yeah. When I was still at State Audit's Office, we, they went from third to second, then to first real quick, and we, we only, gosh, I bet that happened.
I know, I believe.
Fifteen years ago or more.
I think Kate Gerardo, I talked to their prosecutor, I think, he was starting people at fifty-seven.
County, I look at the poll, yeah.
Yeah.
Just, okay. That was my question.
I always think, building on what Locke was saying a little bit earlier about the burnout and employee death. We are lucky that right now, and the team that we have, we have a really good team, as far as both attorneys and support staff that are willing to work together, everyone jumps in and helps. If someone needs to be gone, or if there's an emergency that comes up, people that we have now have been trained, they're skilled. And despite the high-pressure environment that they're subjected to every day, they continue to do well. We've changed some things over the past year, where we're having regular meetings, we are doing training. And our employees do deserve to, we recognize for that. Like you said, they, all of the employees in the office are subjected to looking at things that are, to people that may not be aware of things that are happening in their own backyard, in their own county. And I think that's important to note. And the victim advocates are also subjected to that, not just by looking at those sort of, that sort of material, but also just from hearing firsthand accounts from the victim's folks. The other thing I was going to talk about was, and not only do, does our pay not match up to state government, so we're, we can't compete to the pay that, you know, we might be losing somebody to a state government position, but our benefits also don't, don't match up to state government. We've got a couple of young people that we've hired this year, and we don't only just, right, we've only just recently realized that we don't have any parental leave for the county. So, we've got a young lady that is expecting, and she doesn't, she won't get any parental leave at all, and she hasn't worked long enough to where she won't be able to get any FMO, FMO either. We have another young lady that's recently married, who wants to have a baby at some time in the future, and I think she's doing really well. She's bright, we hope to keep her, you know, for as long as she will stay, but we just don't know. She will stay because if she's never going to get parental leave, she may not, and that coupled with the fact that we can't compete with.
Just the salary, in the first place, it does make it tough.
Maybe that one thing, but I would argue our benefits are better than the state.
State employees have to pay.
Hundred percent insurance, we pay all the retirement, so.
Right, right, I mean, and that's the thing, we do have two retirements, but again, like, if you're looking at someone that's young and someone that's looking at having a baby, you know, that would be one thing that would make me turn away. If I was looking at working for the state and working for the county, if I'm not getting any parental leave, if the state's going to pay me six weeks, then.
It's better than no weeks.
Well, the difference between your ask and the budget officers is about forty-six thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, I mean, here's our.
Their total adjustments were fifty.
Yeah, the total adjustments in this column is about fifty thousand, that they're asking, on top of the COLA. If you look at my, the salary schedule, or the sal, this salary schedule I put together, where current salary's there, COLA, total would be thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand, and then the additional adjustments that they're requesting is another fifty thousand. So, that's what.
I was looking at the numbers on the legal assistant, there's two of them, I think you're requesting fifteen hundred adjustment, and two of them, you're looking at a four thousand dollar adjustment, and then on the assistant prosecuting attorneys, there's one of them at a four thousand dollar adjustment, and the other two of them at fifteen hundred, so I didn't know if that was.
But that was just more, I think, we were looking at, and I have since actually gone through and adjusted that again, and I'd be happy to send that to everyone. I think when I was initially looking at it, I was looking at longevity and trying to match up a little bit better with some of the other agencies I looked at and researched. Ideally, I think I would like to see some people get a little bit more, just on the merit side of things. Again, I don't really know how to address that other than ask for it. Any comments, questions?
No, I can't throw these into the same pool.
It's not a big ask when you look at, but...
Well, I don't know if we're doing, I know that there's been talk about a pool for other county, for other county offices or agencies. And that's the situation. I'll, again, I toyed with that a little bit more earlier, and so I'll send you what my ask would be in the...
Okay. Okay. Don't have any more questions or anything?
So the thought would be to do what we've been doing today with this work, Rashila. See what the pool is. I'm curious about the, the other counties. I mean, we, we all live with the other state numbers all, every day. But the Capes, the Camdens, Boone maybe, I don't know, not so much, Franklin. Some of those sort of sister counties in this, a bit of...
Callaway, man.
Callaway, Boone, aren't they a joint?
They're joined as a circuit.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's a little different than...
The prosecutor's offices are the same. It's just the judicial circuit, but the judges themselves are a little different.
But they're second-class, they're not, they're smaller, but a lot smaller than that. They were once first-class.
What's that? Oh, they were once first-class.
Not that long ago, yeah.
Well, that's all the nuclear plant there.
It's depreciated.
Okay, I don't know when we plan to exactly talk about all these adjustments and exactly how we're going to handle those, if we're going to do that at the end of the day tomorrow, if we're going to do a standalone discussion next week, one day.
It's a pretty big discussion.
Yeah, we might have to do a standalone.
Until we wear somebody down and we get somebody to agree with the other one, so. And I mean, I think anybody that wants to come and sit in and discuss, or you can listen to it while we're doing it. Participate if y'all got any great ideas to try to fix it across the county. I think we've got this issue in a lot of departments. So I think it's definitely something we need to take a look at.
Thank you.
I think we plan to, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's going to be one hell of a big bucket.
I don't know. It's going to empty pretty fast.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What page are we on?
Trying to figure that out. Oh, got it. Oh, we did not go over his child support budget blocks. It's similar.
Was there, was there a lot of difference?
Here, sorry, real quick.
Page.
Yeah.
Child support is page 69. And again, the only thing is like salaries where he's got, and they're not asking for as much. But on top of the COLA, there is requested adjustment is totals like...
Eight thousand?
No, 37.
Increase in mileage, well...
37, 80, or 41. So anyway, that's, sorry, forgot about that before he walked away. Yeah, because that's his apartment.
We're on page 69?
69.
Oh, I was on the revenue side, I'm sorry.
Yeah, anyway. But typically, their office is almost, pretty much fully funded by state reimbursement, so anyway. All right, sorry. Now what page are you on? Seventeen, okay.
So I don't have, first, good afternoon. Again, when I did my presentation, I included the information that I, that I wanted to all consider. I had conversations with each of you, I think discrepancies in the salary. I will make note that at that time, I was waiting for the contract to come back from Department of Health and Senior Services. I think I've received it today, and they offered $165,000. So 76,000 of that would go back towards the salaries. I believe that marked an ice difference is 101,000, and then he would have the 76,000 that would be reimbursed by the Department of Health and Senior Services, though it would have to be linked between December and January, July. So I think that's the only unknown piece that was there when I did my presentation for the budget. Our ask is, is we need help getting employees, we can't even retain employees. We are consistently functioning down with mandatory overtime, there is no quality supply for the 24/7 facility. We're not asking to make our employees more comfortable, we're asking to get employees. High-risk, it's dangerous, 30, 37, 5 months, and we're at approximately $31,000, $32, $31,000, $31,000.
So your, this additional revenue would come in where? Under the juvenile detention personnel line?
No, so it's an entirely different...
Oh, it'd be, oh, it's a grant, okay.
And I just, we just received the contract, and so I haven't looked at all of the nuances. It hasn't been signed off on, but it is 365,000. Has to be extended by July 31st.
Is that all personnel?
No, so we asked for 76,000 personnel.
Okay, that was 76,000, okay.
We all asked for a date, is, the office supplies a large number.
You did say seven, okay.
Some premature rates for conference table, waiting for mature detention, so...
All right. Thank you, okay.
We also, we have to get signatures, and then we're going to have to discuss the...
Next week's meeting, present to commission, okay.
Is there some, the correct term is not trickiness or maneuvering or whatever. But this June 30 expiration date that you mentioned?
July 31st.
I'm sorry, July 31 expiration, and we've got, we think in terms of a calendar year, right?
Correct.
So is there a way that, that these dollars, these 76,000 dollars could be expended for person A, B, C, D, and then, and burned, burned up in seven months?
So that's the formula we apply for. I asked Debbie if we would be able to utilize the funding. So it's to go towards people, so anybody who works directly with the youth who could have COVID, so all of our youth specialists, the co, so it would be my hope that we would extend that out first, so that we can utilize it all. And I've not read through the details of it.
We would have to jump through several hoops to, to be legitimate in how we allocate costs and, and burn up to 76. We've got an expert in jumping through hoops over here. Yes, yes. Yes, hoop jumper. Okay.
Do you want to go through specific? I mean, I think, it seems like your biggest requests are for the youth specialist, right? They're the largest, right?
Those are the 11,000 area, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the higher ones, yeah. In fact, that's the majority of your request, right?
Yes.
Majority of the additional, okay. Yeah, we don't disagree on any other line item, do we? I don't think, yeah. Not that I don't disagree with it, it's just I, the approach I took, I was just going to put the 4% in and then...
This is the only line of discrepancy.
Yeah.
When you, when you threw the numbers together, Toby, you had a goal at, at the end to be at, at a certain number. The fact that we're doing a, or we're proposing a 4% COLA, did that drop your request number down because the COLA was coming? Or did you just add the COLA on top of what you would have otherwise asked for?
No, so we're just asking for the end salaries to be at a certain spot. And so whatever is offset by that COLA, our goal is that the salaries are at the asking point of our request.
Yeah, because you, you got, it's like 46,000 for youth specialist threes, 40, what did I see here?
One.
Forty.
Forty-six for the ones, 48 for the twos, 52 for the three.
So you've got your operational supervisors, and they supervise the rest of the youth specialists. More so 46 to 48, then 52 for supervisors.
Give me those again.
46 to 48 per youth specialist, and 52 to, for the supervisors of the youth specialists.
Forty-six would be like the start, yeah, because I see your more recently hired ones, your one, you got...
The ones?
Six, yeah.
Okay. We should have asked about salaries yesterday. Or did we?
I did not.
We, we took a trip to Joplin and toured their, their juvenile center. Should have asked a few of them, what, how much you make, right? I don't know.
Call and ask? Call and ask. Be interesting.
I'll say the same as I did for like the assessors, yeah, the youth specialists are some of the lowest-paid employees in camp.
Right. And what, what, generally, what, what credentials does a youth specialist have when they start with you?
So they're going to have to, we have people who don't have any education. And they're going to have to be at least 21, and they have to be able to pass all of the background checks, social services, the child abuse network screenings, they have to be drug-free, no marijuana, no anything.
Residential, they have to have a high school diploma or a high...
So high school.
All right. And today, if, under the, before we made any adjustments, when they'd come in today, you'd offer them a job at how much?
If they came in today, we would offer them a job somewhere between 31, 200, 200, they had experience with their agency or an education, but most of them started 31, 200. I'm sorry, 32,900.
32,900, yeah.
But if the sheriff hired him as jailers, he would offer them a job at?
She's going, don't give them any ideas.
Put them in the room, I'm going to say, I'll never take any of your employees, but hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
It's 50,000.
At 18, so our requirements are more rigid. I, you don't do child abuse new life screens?
No, we do, we have history.
And they, their employees can start at 18, and ours have to be 21. And by the time you have a 21-year-old, he's going to be making 32,000. And then there's mandatory overtime, holidays, evenings, weekends.
I would add to part of, Matt and I are constantly asking our staff to do overtime, but a majority of our staff have a second job, which appears their ability to do in the overtime. They're working, one of our youth specialist three has a, works spending 31 hours a week in ours. So he's, a lot of them are unavailable for any kind of a second job, for overtime with us because of the responsibilities of the second job.
It's constantly taxing, it's exhausting for the people who supervise and have to consistently, every day, wonder how we're going to meet the separate core ratios to fill those slots. We asked staff meeting on Monday, are we staffed for the holidays? And Matt's response is, well, this week we are, but the closer we get to that day, who knows what's going to happen? And I submitted this, we were at six of nine positions for our full-time, for our full-time positions. And we have to have every position full, and every position working all of their hours to meet our ratios. So when we're down to be full-time, then everybody's in mandatory overtime, but everybody has a second job because the salaries are so low.
And you worked Thanksgiving, you worked on Sunday evening.
It's, it's constant, there's that constant call line. And the staff is so new that they consistently have questions, which taxes everybody. There's a consistent phone calls, everyday phone calls, how do we handle, what do we do? And then they turn a birthday leave and start the process over again. And these, these are not, we're not reading reports of abused and neglected children and gruesome acts. We're managing the children on-site who have endured the things that people are reading about, as we read about in jail.
What's the difference between the youth specialist and the J O?
A youth specialist works directly on the unit, and the deputy juvenile officer is under the court services branch. So they're supervising the kids that are in the community, if they're going to court. The youth specialists are in-house, working with kids in the house.
So they're on the detention side and residential side, specialist and J Os, okay. I didn't know if there was any difference in there, because I just, I know on the detention side, there are some challenges.
So the detention and residential side, both, we house many of the same youth. So in detention, we have youth who can really only be maintained in cells. On residential, we can take some of those same kids and hold them over, hold them non-securely. So they can't, they're not safe to be in the community, but they don't have to be in a cell. We serve kids who have been diverted from Division A Youth Services, who have escalated needs on the unit. We take emergency care replacements from the Children's Division. So the needs on both residential and detention are virtually the same. In detention, you have cells that offer a degree of control well on the unit. If they escalate and they do, that's where two of the head injuries came from, was an emergency care who's been in care since he was eight, having been abandoned by his parents and sexually abused on the streets, leaving his homes with his parents. So he's 18 now, but he is all to himself.
Are all of the youths Cole County residents?
We currently have one out-of-county emergency care placement. And then we will hold youth for Division of Youth Services, where we have openings. And we had one of their out-of-county youth placed with us here a few weeks ago. And then there was an application a last couple of months where they needed attention at the other one.
So when we do hold for Division of Youth, do they compensate us for that?
They do, so if we're holding one of their youth that is diverted, that is with them, that is placed with us, that is $145 a day. If they're in detention, they're $65 a day.
What is it?
$65 a day.
Which is sort of what we pay when we put one of ours somewhere else?
Yes, and we are looking at raising all of those rates statewide. Those rates are going up, so we're looking at raising our rates January 1st as well. Like at $75 a day for detention. But it's infrequently, we utilize those beds for out-of-county kids because we currently have two of our own kids housed in a dare. So we all frequently have beds in detention that are available.
Right.
And then the Children's Division reimburses us $130,000. And then the Children's Division reimburses us a hundred and thirty-nine dollars a day for an emergency care.
There's, to me, there's something patently unfair about a single circuit juvenile that we, that we are. So much supported by the local county versus a multi-county which gets state funding. Is that right? I mean, am I accurate here?
Yes, they receive state funding. So we're first class and Cole County supports us. They do reimburse us for salaries and that is the, the reimbursement's a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. The juvenile detention personnel is the state reimbursement for our positions. But they manage the entire circuits, the buildings, salaries, everything for other counties.
Also the state, they, they pay defer comp and then also loziers. We're, we're only getting orders.
Eligible for service, our, our, also the service they serve.
Right.
That is true. If any benefit difference from the state, it would be the juvenile department.
Right.
As far as that goes, but.
Makes no sense.
No, I, it's a head check.
County being part of a multi-county circuit gets much better deal. No sense at all.
Can we, can we just secede and we'll go overcome?
No, no, we wanna, we wanna annex a county or sort of invite another one, almost pay him to join us, all right? Join our circuit.
I'm not sure what the benefit was, but.
Well.
It's definitely how.
As long as they had good kids in that county, we'd like it.
So take my guitar, Rose Sage.
I don't have any more questions.
I don't know what the answer is, but.
I, I would, Toby, seriously ask you to maybe swing back to those folks down in Jasper. Let's see. Yeah. We have contact down there now, right?
Actually talked to him this morning.
Okay.
Do you know what a dare, or their salaries, or we, any idea? I know it's not quite the same, it's a smaller county, but are we?
We'll see, and that's, that's a five county.
Way off what they pay, or? Oh, it's state, that's state.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it'd be good to know, even though they're not quite like us.
And the DUIs facility started forty-eight thousand. And that's where we start, they've sold a couple of our.
Do, do, is there a logical progression for your youth specialist that, that can stay with you long enough to go one, two, three, and into something else?
So you have three that sort of have been with us an extended amount. Two, Maurice and Jeff.
Yeah, Maurice is an operations supervisor.
So Maurice was a youth specialist and now he's an operations supervisor. And we have another, our daytime youth specialist, he's been with us ten years.
He just got his tenure.
Ten years. We will promote him to a supervisor when the position allows. We did ask him at the last junction that he can't afford to quit his second job at the salary. And so he can't be available because it is a twenty-four seven availability. So we can't promote him because he can't quit a second job in ours, because he can't afford to.
Wow.
I would say probably two-thirds of the youth specialists have a second job. Or they are working all the others at the.
Okay.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. No discussion on the new facility?
Well, we could give a quick recap of what we saw yesterday, I guess, Toby, if they're interested. We had a Uber driver take us to Jasper and back yesterday.
Actually, that's one of the nicest things that's ever happened today, so I'll take it.
They have a, they have a very nice facility down there, it's a secured facility. When you walk in the door, front door, no matter who or what you are, I think you, you get scanned, you get through the, you gotta, you know, put your cellphone in a container. It's just like going to the Capitol. So the whole building is, is that way. They have an onsite courtroom right there, which is kind of interesting. They financed it with a sales tax and they, they use the logic down there that we use up here on sales tax. Because they are immediately west of them is Kansas, just a little south of that is Oklahoma, a little bit further down is Arkansas. And they think that as much as forty percent of the retail that takes place in that county comes from those other places. So they decided, let's just let those other places help fund our, our juvenile facility as well as a new courthouse. They have a half, was it a half cent or quarter cent? I can't remember.
Well, I thought it was a quarter cent.
Could be, quarter cent, whatever it was, the, the citizens voted some years ago to fund this place with a sales tax. And I think they've even renewed it once, maybe, anyway. You could add to that, Toby.
So it's an aid bed facility, which is what we're looking at. They do have the option to expand. Do not have a residential non-security unit. They do bring in some from the school district, and the school district helps offset some of the costs as a result of that. They have outdoor space, they have a half court basketball. They have a nice facility. It, it doesn't, it's not poor, it doesn't appear to be a juvenile office, it looks it nicely.
Have an onsite teacher who is paid by the school district.
We have an onsite, we have two onsite schools. They have, with the alternative school classroom up there in the form of detention. We do have a teacher provided by the school district who provides education to both sides of our building.
Okay. What else? They have a Sallyport.
They have a Sally. They have an intake room, they have a powder room, so if you're out of control, they can put them in the powder room. There's no metal wedges, a glass center detention, they have a twenty-minute window and then a sixty-minute window. So some of the windows, glass won't break for sixty minutes, the other doesn't break for twenty. They have related furniture. Entities in there, cells are all locked down. I think I would like more cameras, more security. They have a very unrested system on their detention cells that when they file, it presents all of the demographics that I've been inside. Medication requirements, it logs, the mandatory check-ins have been made. Their TV is mounted way up high so that the kids can destroy it. So I, in fact, I don't know how they watch it, but.
They were able to knock out some of the ceiling fixtures in the half court with basketballs, right?
And the half court basketball, when they get them stuff to throw, then they knock out sprinklers and knock out lights and, and if it, if you torn up with this population, it's somebody's bound to make you go out.
And they did have, their outdoor facility though is, is, is surrounded by the walls of the, different walls. They did have a Spider-Man there who made an escape by literally climbing the wall. Did you hear him talk about that?
I did not hear.
Yeah, they actually had a fellow who went out every day and he, he looked like he just contemplated the walls, but he was actually saying, that brick sticks out a little further, that rock sticks. They, they ended up having a climbing wall without paying for it. Because he climbed out. They caught him within two hours down the street, but, yeah. These people are very ingenious. Unbelievably ingenious.
It's very unbelievable. We were just talking about this, we were listening last evening about the ways that they will figure out to achieve goals.
Sounds like us growing up, I thought.
Now, they did have, the breakfast lunches is, comes from the school district? Is that right?
The school district provides their breakfast and lunch Monday through Friday. So they just have to provide dinner and then, and they don't have a residential unit, so they just have to provide them to the detention unit, the dinners and then the weekend meals. Their youth specialist cook those and they just have a steamed or kitchen like what you would find in a house. It's not a commercial kitchen, but then they're only serving eight at any time.
Okay, anything else? Session, questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Pardon?
Oh, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I'm ready to recess.
Yeah. Because then tomorrow we just have EMS and public works mainly.
Assessor.
Assessor.
Hey, you can make it.
And if Nick comes, then we'll.
Eight AM start.
Yeah.
Motion to stand in recess until four-thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First, ten, you might need to, you might wanna make your, tell us what you want to do, how you want to put salaries in the budget, we need to.
So what did you say the? What'd you say the percent, Debbie, was that we took all of the?